First allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to repub, where we stand, one nation, unafraid, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presentation tonight, Leader of the Pack.
So Leader of the Pack is our Student of the Month presentation from each of the buildings. So we'll call Mr. Darling, Ms. Francis up to recognize that this is Samuel. Sorry.
No worries, I'm both.
Okay, so Mr. Darling and I would like to congratulate Mason and Paul because he is one of our fifth graders over at the elementary school. Ms. Cuzaleño is his teacher. She nominated him because he is kind, respectful, responsible. He's an active participant in class. He's a hard worker. He's always willing to help out. He also helped me. I had a situation on the bus and Mason stepped right up and agreed to sit with a student and he made the person feel comfortable and the bus was able to proceed. So we're very proud to present him today with this award for Leader of the Pack for setting an example for other students. Congratulations.
All right. So for Highland Middle School, we chose a seventh grader. Her name is Scarlett Lovell. Ms. Coburn and I, Ms. Coburn is not here tonight. She actually just got married. So she's spending a little bit of time, but she wanted to be here and she wanted to tell you congratulations. So here's a few words from Scarlett's teachers regarding how amazing she is. So Scarlett is an amazing student and is seventh grade Leader of the Pack. She has a positive attitude and great personality. She always has a friendly hello and is enthusiastic about class. She loves to share stories about her life and is genuinely interested in how teachers are and makes great personal connections. Scarlett is truly an asset to every classroom. I am a, this is, Ms. Geiger said this, "I am uplifted by her positivity and her willingness to face any challenge in class, including learning a new language, which isn't always easy." And lastly, Scarlett is a great girl, a really hard worker, and more importantly, a good friend, which is very important, especially in middle school. So congratulations. And here's your, here's some, just had a bit of ideas, words that you can keep. And then here's your recipient. All right. Congratulations.
One more, hold on.
Oh, one more. All right. Awesome. Congratulations.
We could just remind everyone, in school, we are wearing masks in public sessions. So if you do not have a mask, one of the administrators can help you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So Mr. Zimmer and I are very proud to congratulate 10th grader Mary Tomlin on receiving Leader of the Pack. And we have a number of her teachers who gave some great accolades and praise. It's a lot. So it's not very quick. Yeah. So Ms. Sylvester, according to Sylvester, Mary is a light. She brightens up everyone's day with her smile and fine words. Mary is a responsive and active listener, always engaging with people and meeting them where they are. Ms. Santa Gata said Mary is a special asset to our class and that she exudes a sense of awe. She is truly willing to learn and expand her horizons. She makes the class more fun with her natural enthusiasm and keen sense of observation. She's a true leader and wow when she's sitting. Ms. Mizel, during freshman year of all remote learning, Mary was a tremendous standout who sparked, despite the relative isolation of Zoom classes, she always participated and offered fantastic observations to the literature or characters we were reading at the time. Her sense of right and wrong extended from the literature into real life as she organized an equity rally in Highland for her peers. She exemplifies the model, be the change you wish to see in the world. Yay, Mary. Ms. Matthews, great positive attitude, always, always gives everything her all, even if it's new, and always lifts other people up. And Ms. Santini, I work as a lunch monitor at the high school. Mary demonstrates so many positive qualities. She's a born leader with a positive attitude. She is so polite and courteous. She always greets you with a smile. She cares about her peers and wants to help. When we honor a pep rally, she sang the National Anthem a cappella. She is such a talented young lady. I was so happy for her when she won her class presidency and so proud she was chosen to be our Leader of the Pack. Congratulations.
So Mr. Miller, we have something to put in just before our presentation. We've had someone that was missing from last month's meeting when we recognized folks from the Mid-Hudson School Study Council. So Mrs. Dudley-Lemick is going to recognize Mr. Pottash.
Carol.
Oh, Carol.
So Carol, first, I'm going to read what Mr. Bon Jovi wrote to nominate you for this award. I am writing this letter to nominate Carol Potash for the 2021 Award for Excellence in the category of Administration. Carol serves as our Director of Technology and oversees all computers, phones, cameras, ID cards, and sound systems in the Highland County School District. In her time in Highland, Carol has made a tremendous positive impact on the computers and the delivery of technology to students. In her time as Director of Technology, Carol has taken Highland from a district that had a moderate amount of technology for teachers, staff, and students to one of the top technology-rich districts in the county. The pandemic was a true challenge for Carol and her department as we were several years away from being a one-to-one device district. When schools were abruptly closed in March of 2020, Carol and her department answered the call. It was truly a Herculean task to get both devices and internet services to all the children of Highland as it went all remote for several months. Her plan to go one-to-one, but her plan to go to a one-to-one device district over several years was quickly changed to just several months. The amount of organizations set up, distribution, and troubleshooting that took place was incredible. Without Carol's knowledge and leadership, Highland would not have been able to navigate the move to all remote as well as we did. The faculty, staff, and students and families owe Carol a big thank you for what she did for them. As technology continually evolves, Carol is continually looking to improve our hardware, software, and our cybersecurity so that Highland can continue to stay on the cutting edge of technology. I could not be prouder to have Carol as a member of my cabinet in charge of our technology department. And I would just like to add that Carol and I have worked together for a long time. I was a teacher when I started and we have worked very closely, not only as administrators, but when I was a teacher in the classroom, you know, she was always willing to help me out, to do something new. If I came to her with an idea or she comes to me with an idea, and it was, it was just a process. And I, I couldn't be prouder to have her as my colleague and my friend. So congratulations.
Sarah used the first iPad that came in. The old, the interactive white words, the portable ones.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
How was it? I just wanted to thank the parents of our Leaders of the Pack. We know that it takes a partnership between the school and the home to really optimize and make the most of this investment of public education. So thank you for all you do, all the parents.
Okay, so I think we now have a special presentation. Dr. Path, there he is. And Sailor from the high school are here to talk to the board about a pilot that we are undertaking here at the high school called the Junior Youth Peer Leadership Class.
All right. So about two years ago, I went to Mr. Zimmer with an idea for an elective class that I wanted to teach called Citizenship and Action. And I'd like to give this here before you to talk about some of their ideas. As this course I presented to the class, I asked them to select an issue that they thought was really important and a place that they could make a change and try to guide them through making that change. And I'll turn it over to Victoria because it was really her inspiration that brought us to the next steps, of which you know some of the story. So Victoria, go ahead.
So last year, I was having some problems with my own mental health and I decided that, you know, when Sailor asked me to participate in this project, I thought, you know, students' mental health is something that we should look at, especially because of COVID, it was something that was brought more to light. So I worked with Sailor and other students in the class to formulate an idea that we presented to you and we also presented to two other senators. We also presented at a New York conference for school mental health. And eventually, that idea had gotten the attention of another organization called Youth Power. And one of the people that worked there, Charles Race, reached out to us and he wanted us to pilot his program, well, their program for junior youth peer advocates. And so that program will be, it's in the very beginning stages now, but I'm very lucky to be a part of it and I'm happy that I can actually make some change hopefully within the school district and other schools.
So I got involved with Ms. Sailor's class last year. When the topic, you know, became mental health, she asked me to kind of come onboard and just consult. And it's, I'm going to say the most obvious thing in the world, which is that the last year and a half has been really hard on our students. And I know, speaking on behalf of myself, the other district mental health people, we're doing our best to support students, but we have more and more every day. Right? I've never been busier in terms of providing services to students. But the other thing we know is that there are a ton of students who are not ever going to knock on my door, you know. But they're talking to their peers. They're talking to their fellow students and they're asking for support, right? And so this, this project is going to be a way to train other students, to train peers, to listen and to empathize and to point students in the right direction if they do need, you know, more severe help. Because I know that for every student who shows up in my office, there are probably five or ten who never will, but they also need support. So speaking as a mental health professional, I'm really excited about this coming to our school. I think it's going to be a lot of good and I'm really happy to support in any way I can. The other thing I have to say is that, you know, I've worked in Highland now for seven years. I've worked in other schools previously and I've really never been in a community or worked with a, a school district where there is this much support from everybody, Mr. Zimmer, Mr. Murphy, everybody on the board, for providing mental health, for supporting students' mental health. And so I think that this is just another step in, in the direction of where Highland has been going, which is really valuing being higher skilled.
And just to punctuate it a little bit, what the program's going to do is it's going to train our students. It's modeled on a program that already exists for the, I believe it's 18 to 24, that college age, to be counselors to their peers. And in that program, the Youth Peer Leader Program, their services are actually available through Medicaid. So what we would be doing is scaling that down to high school level and to help students use some of their lived experience in a way that allows them to counsel their peers and learn some valuable skills. They're already asking their peers for advice. They're just getting kind of crappy advice. So it would be great to have kids that are trained, that are out there, and then they themselves are set up to eventually go into a career in mental health or in the field that way. So we're really excited to be the first school that they've selected statewide to pilot this program. I believe right now we are the only school that they're piloting events. So it's a great honor and we're really excited about what it can offer for our students.
And so you'll be together supervising this program as things are, it all sounds good. And we'd like additional support. It all sounds good till a parent and a child walk through saying, hey, I had a negative experience and we have a student counselor. So you're going to provide the supervision, the training, all of those types of things?
The program is extremely structured and it goes, it's a four-week training, which this Youth Power organization will do with us. Like I said, already modeled up of the one that they do for older students. The actual meetings will be supervised by one of us. We'll have to be in the building at the time for the meetings. And, but it's, yeah, you want to add to that?
Well, we're also going to be involved in selecting these students or initiative.
Yes.
So not just anybody's going to be a student?
Right.
All right. I mean, this is real, we'll have a patient. We don't have any local designs to draw upon because you're being the first.
We're creating it.
And it's exciting.
And I want to speak to how wonderful, I was impressed with your, your presentation when you were last game course. And I am again impressed for you to walk up so calmly and with such control of your own person and say, I was having difficulties with my mental health. And say without, this is not the generation we were raised in. We were raised with a stigma. And I'm so proud of your generation for taking that step and, and showing it's just a natural state of our beings and that as much as we recognize any other part of us that is damaged or needs healing, for you to so confidently do it, you're setting a wonderful example. And I'm incredibly proud of you for that.
I also want to congratulate you guys for taking initiative to move that, that issue of mental health forward. I know I mentioned it several months ago, that it's something that this district's got to wrap their arms around and embrace the issue of mental health that's going on in school district and society alone. I know, you know, back in 2008, nine, during that, the downfall of the economy, Ulster County pulled away mental health services to school districts in Ulster County. We're gradually starting to get that back now. Kudos to you for starting that, that push. And I think the district, with some of that care money that came in, we've hired additional social workers. And I said it back then and I'll say it again, we've got to continue that because we can't just, it can't be just a two-year stint because we got grant money. We have to, as a district, continue that counseling for our students because mental health is an issue throughout our country. And if we don't, you know, jump on board right now and try to, try to bring it together and have these students and even the adults to realize, you know, what's going on. So I appreciate all the efforts that you guys have done. Thank you.
And 100% agree. And I, you know, to back, to back that up with some numbers, we know more than 20% of kids in school nationwide, so this is true for Highland, this is true for everywhere, have some mental health condition that needs treatment. And the majority who get treatment, get it in school. So, and it's not, they get it from people from like MEAS and they get it from the social workers that we've added. And thank you for that. This is another way to expand that because there are always going to be people who are reticent about seeing me until they hear from a peer, you know, hey, this, this can help, right? It's normalized when we have peer groups in the building. The stigma is, is hopefully is reduced. So I'm, I'm really excited and 100% I would, you know, we're going to be there when these groups are meeting. We're certainly not leaving students to care for themselves unsupervised. But I've looked at the training, you know, and I've talked with the people who are providing it. And they're really ourself, you know, they know what they're doing. And again, we'll be there in the background.
When does the program start?
That's the question. So we've been in touch through email since our initial meetings with Mr. Rice and his associate, Mr. Liz Harry. We haven't yet met with them and with Victoria. We just brought her on board, kind of as our first identified student for the program, which seemed appropriate since it was really her, her passion that drove us to this point. And now we're going to get back in touch with him. And I anticipate in the next few weeks, we'll have a more formal meeting with him.
Yeah.
And how many students do you project to be involved?
That's also, yeah, that's also a little bit of an open question. I think our ballpark is between 10 and 15 to, to be trained initially. If we get that many, what we should be able to offer is more than one group, you know, which I, I think will be helpful. But that's, that's the ballpark, 10 to 15 initially.
And if I'm a student that needs support, do I, how do you get a hold of the peer leaders?
They don't even have peer leaders.
I know, like when it gets in place, you're trying to figure out how it, or just they know, certain kids they know who are identified and they just go to them, they see them in the hallways or?
I think part, part of that and there also maybe, I think that's why their model, actually, they specifically wanted a mental health person and a teacher involved because they wanted somebody who was in the classroom that was teaching kids on a daily basis, as well as somebody that was seeing them, that had identified themselves. So our thought process was that between the two of us as well as the peer leaders themselves would be how the students would be identified for the program. But we do definitely want to be mindful about, you know, who this would be an appropriate process for.
Absolutely.
And I did, I was very impressed when we had the, the meeting, how experienced they were in creating this and how structured the whole program was. And so I, that will be part of the whole training process as well. And I do think that they will give students some, the students who are being paid some ownership and making a few of those decisions are saying, you know, what's going to be the most accessible way for a student to access this program. But definitely, there will be a process more than just talking to the friend that you know as a follow, you know, because we'll need to know who the students are and, you know, and what's being seen. And again, you know, maybe some sort of a, a triage connection of, is this something that students can manage or do we need to intervene more?
Which was another part of the program that really impressed me is that the students themselves are trained in when they need to escalate, that they cannot handle it all. So I think that that's really a huge part of the training as well. And, and they, you know, would know what it is for us to be mandated reporters. So they would understand that training is all capable to account.
And is there some type of self-peer for the students that are involved? Because sometimes you're hearing things from your peers, it can also be a lot of, like earthquakes. So is there some type of self-peer portion?
Yeah, actually, one component of the program is exactly that, of the training that they're going to.
And I would also like to add, the reason why I'm so excited about this program also is because I feel like as a school, we have a lot of things in place for, you know, when your student is in crisis, when we're at those points where we need to be calling those hotlines or getting trained medical professionals involved. But we also do need resources for when, you know, a student is having a bad day or if it's not even that serious. So they do have someone to talk to, to be able to de-escalate those situations before they even occur. So we're able to stop, you know, bigger disasters from happening and, you know, catching things before they get to the point where it's irreversible or there's been a lot of damage already done to that student.
It's so impressive. She, she did this presentation. Absolutely. And this is the same reaction. They, they made this presentation to Rotary a couple of weeks ago to bring them on board and then let them know that this was, was happening as a, as a, a proudful moment. And you did, you did such a great job there. You wowed all of them and you wowed all of us. So we are so fortunate that you stepped forward and you're such an ambassador to this. And I think you'll be a great liaison to the, to the professionals. So thank you for doing that.
I'm sure your fellow staff peers will also be instrumental in the success of the program to help steer students and the guys that also. So again, job well done and we did that. Thank you.
And we do, we have a phenomenal building that really has eyes and ears to this issue and stuff. So it's, it's awesome to be part of a staff that's so focused on mental health.
All right. Thank you.
I mean, if any of the families that are here would like to say you're welcome to, you're almost a welcome to these.
I'm sure these students have a lot of love for you.
Thank you for coming.
You have done great work. We're saying thank you to her today.
We are now at the. Okay. We're now at the public comments, part of our agenda. Please, agenda items only. Any topic related to the agenda may be addressed except for personnel or specific student issues. Any emails received regarding curriculum concerns will be forwarded to the appropriate administrator to address. If an individual cannot attend meeting due to unusual circumstances, please indicate in an email to the district clerk. If school board encourages public participation at its meetings, to allow for efficiency in conducting meetings, and to give each speaker a fair opportunity to present his or her views, the following shall apply to the public speaking portion of the agenda. Each speaker shall state their name. Any questions, concerns be submitted in writing with speaker's contact information, name, address, and phone number. Each speaker shall be limited to a time approximately five minutes, which is agreed upon by the board. The board will not permit discussion involving individual personnel or students. Direct all remarks to the chair. Community members may not poll individual board members nor debate other community members in attendance. Members of the community are encouraged to also present their comments in writing. Undue interruption or other interference of the orderly conduct of the Board of Education Business will not be allowed. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. Do we have anybody from the community that would like to comment on any of the agenda items? Curriculum and Instruction, Principal's Monthly Report.
Good evening, everybody. Good to see you all again. It was relatively, you know, recently that we spoke last time about the principal's report, so I only had two updates for you tonight. Specifically, we identified PBIS as an area that we wanted to reinvigorate this school year, you know, kind of in line with the social emotional support that our students have demonstrated, you know, as, as an area of need since returning from COVID. We did have our first PBIS meeting last week and we had 22 participants, which is a, you know, in my experience, a large number of, of committee members to partake in a, in a committee like that. There was a lot of positivity and a lot of great ideas floating around. One of the things that we're planning for next month is a, is a spirit week, you know, a lot of new ideas for those type of things, to raise morale in the building and to get students excited, you know, to be back in, in the building and back in school. So we're very excited about that. Also, we have a few faculty and staff members that organized a food drive. So there's been information put out for Thanksgiving food donations. We've already received a lot of generous contributions from the community. And then that goes to our. And then that goes to our social workers and, and support staff to help identify students that would benefit from that. So just a few things that we're excited about in addition to the number of items on the board report.
The art project that was handled by Ms. Gallin, the, the pictures that you included, this is phenomenal. Really, elementary, it's just phenomenal.
Yeah, that was something Casey had mentioned she wanted to do last year with starting her, uh, virtual art club. And so she started that up this year and she's had about twenty to twenty-five students each meeting. And that was one of the things that they did over the last few weeks. And, yeah, much, much better artists than I am.
You would never think it's elementary. Great, great stuff. Any parent, teacher, I see the other two schools mentioned that there are parent teacher conferences, are you doing that in elementary?
Yes. Yeah, so we have, uh, evening conferences on the twenty-second from five to eight, and morning conferences on the twenty-fourth, I believe, yeah, twenty-fourth from eight to eleven. Typically, you know, in the two years I've been here, those are really well attended. I know teachers have already been reaching out to family members to start signing up for those things. A lot of them are using sign up genius, you know, to book, to book time slots with the teachers, so.
I see the middle schools, they had seventy percent already made reservations. So do you have any idea how, how many parents have signed up yet?
It depends on the teachers. I know some of them were sending their sign up genius out over the last few days. So it's difficult to say, you know, I don't have a number exactly of how many have signed up. But in my experience over the last few years, I would say it's,
Every slot.
Yeah, pretty much every, every slot. It's rare that we have more than one or two parents. Especially for the, for the first parent teacher conference that don't sign up, you know. The second one, or later on in the year, parents might feel like they, they have a good feel for what's going on in the classroom and with their students, but it's, yeah, it's very well attended. Any other questions?
Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you all.
I'm stepping in tonight. So, hi, everybody again. Uh, thank you for allowing me to step in for Ms. Coburn. So just aside from what you got in your, in our updates, just a few things. One, Highland Middle School will also be doing a spirit week next week, which we're very excited for. It's our first one in a long time, so the kids are very excited and so is the staff, so that'll be fun next week. And second, our modified season just ended last week. Last Friday was our last game, which was girls soccer. And we had a great season overall with all of our modified teams. Two really great highlight, I mean, everybody did great, but two really great highlights, football was five and O, which is awesome. They were very excited about that, so they had a really, really awesome season. And, uh, girls volleyball was eight and one, which is also amazing. And even in the one game they lost, it was a very close, close game, so. And I didn't mention it when she was here, I should have. Our cross-country team as well did great, and Scarlett, who was just here a few minutes ago, actually finished eighth place in the Modified Invitational that they do at the end of the year. So, really awesome season, and we were very excited to see all of our student athletes return to the ball scores. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I do not have any addition to my board report, but I would like to highlight one item that's on there. As you're aware, last Wednesday night, one of the inductees in the two thousand twenty-one Husky Hall of Fame was Scott McFarland. Scott, the next morning, Scott came into the high school and met, and presented to a group of about a hundred of our students. So Highland High School's graduate and NBC News correspondent Scott McFarland was here last Thursday to speak to students about how his time in Highland helped shape his identity to launch his career. After graduating from Highland in nineteen ninety-four, McFarland went on to become an award-winning journalist who had interviewed presidents, senators, governors, and a Supreme Court justice. He described journalism as a career that is competitive, fast-paced, and creative. He also said that anyone who enters the field should have a passion for reading and writing as well as a strong sense of curiosity. McFarland, who was in town, as you know, to mark his induction to the, into the Husky Hall of Fame, told the audience, and about a hundred of our students, that he is so very proud to be a Highland graduate. And he said, quote, "Please know that because you are a student here, there's nothing you can't accomplish." So I'd like to publicly thank Mr. McFarland for his time. It really was a wonderful morning. Maggie would agree, she was there, he really did a fantastic job. And he really captured everybody for, for about forty-five minutes. Everybody was really attentive on everything that he said. So I'd like to thank him and make sure you are aware of what he did. And that's all I know. Any questions? Thank you.
Director's monthly report. Does anybody have any questions, or any of the directors?
I just want to, I want to thank Kathy McCullough and Peter Miller. Reading both of your reports, Kathy, kudos to your drivers, to your staff, especially your, yourself. Your mechanics are going out and driving, I know we're short-staffed on bus drivers, so just tell them that, you know, it's part of the board's concern. We, we appreciate, you know, them stepping in and the hard work they're doing to transport our students safely on a daily basis. And just reading on the mechanic side, that again, inspections for our buses are still probably almost at a hundred percent again. And that's, that's, that's kudos to that mechanic staff. I mean, hopefully, as we progress into this new, uh, bond issue that we're anticipating, that we can improve the facility that they're working in. But thank you to them for working diligently to make our bus transportation system the safest in the area. Thank you to your drivers, your staff, and yourself.
Thank you, I will pass it on.
Can I ask, do we have driver positions that have not been filled, and if so, how many?
Yes.
Five.
We're down to,
Yes, we're down to four.
Go four.
There's four positions, driver positions, that are not filled?
Yes, that's correct.
All right.
We, we provide the training, don't we?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a question about, um, with Dr. Boyd, about the partnerships with, for the program. So some of the partnerships for the work-based opportunities in your report, did you talk about some of those partnerships?
The biggest one that we just started last week was Tractor Supply, right here in Highland. So for the past year and a half, we've had, there's a stretch where, you know, we definitely were not comfortable going out into communities. And then, once we got to a point where we thought that, you know, we wanted to get back out there a little bit, we had some roadblocks with some of the outside partnerships being willing to take in some of our students. So we were at a standstill for a little bit. Kudos to Ms. Heisenfeld in the Flex Program for really reaching out to everybody in the area. You know, we, and we're excited that we found one right in the community with Tractor Supply. So our students are going to be starting there a few days a week to be going there and working with them and learning some skill sets with them. Their staff has been great just in the beginning of this process of getting, you know, responding to us, which a lot of places we, we were struggling just to get a response. So we'll be starting with them. And we're also going to be doing some internal work with some of our staff. Pseudo-internships with some of the areas, working down in our middle school library as well with Mr. Davies. So, but the Tractor Supply is our main, uh, new one for our community partnership.
And they are worthy of mention, because they are so locally focused. They help out with so many different communities, school-based organizations.
They were so excited to, to get on board with us.
And it's a cool story.
It is a cool story.
I'll be happy to visit them at their opportunities, so I can get a little chicken.
Here's a garage.
Pete, uh, just wanted to thank you and your staff for leading the building, the three very successful building tours. The administrators also thanked you for being there and helped emphasize the points that the student leader was making. Again, it, it went, it went well, and this will, it's going to go a long way towards helping us shape our next building project that will play out for next year. Thank you again. Frank?
Yes.
Is there any open coaching positions left for the winter season?
Yeah, right now, we're still looking for a girls JV basketball coach. Other than that, for the winter season, we have a coach revenue position.
It does, are there still, are there numbers there within that program?
Yes.
And even for modified also?
Yes, we have a modified coach in place now, or it's on, on, on the agenda. And the number there is almost, I think it's close to twenty that signed up.
How about the varsity program?
The varsity girls?
Yeah. How many?
We have, I believe, there's seventeen that signed up for varsity and JV combined. Other, we had our coaching meeting today, and the other sports, the numbers are very high. Boys basketball, I think it was around thirty-five between the varsity indoor track was thirty-six, wrestling twenty, bowling, I think was twenty. The numbers are, are there, and also for the modified basketball and then modified basketball.
Not to jump ahead too far, but looking towards the spring season, how are we sitting as far as that goes?
We have some positions that we, and I, we're going to have in front of you hopefully December, the coaching positions for spring.
Thank you.
Yep.
Sound like a, one other comment I'd like to make. I, I know we're getting into our, what we have on our agenda tonight, the budget calendar. This is not premature, but I think the board's got to seriously consider for our O and M department, increasing the staff for, uh, ground keepers. We've invested, or the community invested in hundreds of thousands of dollars of additional equipment for that department. And from my experience in seeing how hard they have to work with two individuals maintaining our grounds, and with this new equipment, I, I think we seriously got to consider looking to increase that to a third position. So I'd like the, the administrative team to work on trying to put that together, because I think, uh, it's not beneficial to have two or three hundred thousand dollars' worth of new equipment that the taxpayers voted in and not have the individuals to run those pieces of equipment and maintain our facilities the way they do.
But one might ask why we bought them if we didn't have the people to run it.
Well, we, we, we know what our status is, and we see that, that, that report.
We had a letter notice at one point in time.
And that monthly report consistently says that we're still looking to fill positions. We're still working with subs for our grounds positions, so I think we have to look at that. And I think, you know, the district as a whole has to consider that.
There would be many needs coming to the board during the budget season, so I, I do appreciate a shout-out. The issue is I'd rather see the budget process take hold and let's see what comes to the top. I'm sure everybody up here has a particular need that they would want to see or a staffing position.
But Mike, you gotta, you gotta think that we as a board put that proposition forward to the taxpayers, purchase that equipment. We did that four years ago, or three years ago, and we did it just recently. So I, I, I think, you know, to have our due diligence, we have to consider that, that if we presented that to the community, that that equipment was needed to maintain our parking facilities that we increased, we need the staff to main, to run that equipment to maintain the facility.
I appreciate and support that, but I've heard you say add positions several times this evening. Without these federal grants, it's highly unlikely we'll be able to keep many of these other positions. And, you know, I appreciate the conversation, but I'm seeing the numbers swell in one particular meeting, and we're not even at the budget process. So it just concerns me a little bit.
We've traditionally always been looking to fill those extra slots, extra seats wherever you want. And again, it's really just typical.
Is there, so there's positions not filled? Are there grounds positions that are not, that the district has that are not filled right now?
No.
All right, so no. We got four.
But we are working with substitutes in those positions.
There is, there is one grounds position that's technically open, yes.
Where, where are we starting? So there's one position, grounds position the district has that is not filled by a permanent staff member?
Correct.
And when is the next time, if we're interested in filling it, then you, that means it's in the budget, and you can post it tomorrow if you want, right?
I mean, the, the potential trickle-down from that also could be, I mean, right now, we're still looking for some custodial positions to fill, is that correct?
We still are working our way through civil service with the head custodial position.
Right.
Which creates a cascading problem, because we have people that have step-back rights. So we have a high number of people working in positions outside of their normal positions. So we have subs that are filling in the positions that we can't fill because of step-back rights and promotions.
But, I mean, when we have open positions within the school, community, uh, school staff, uh, nothing can stop somebody to run one.
I, I'd rather that, Dr. Boyd, if you would just take a look at this area, it sounds like there's a lot of questions around filled or unfilled or where they are in the process. Maybe we can hear a little bit more about that at the next meeting. All right, any other questions?
Just tying off the point, if you're, uh, Miller, that in your report, if you find that you are lacking staff or, or that the current staff, but its numbers is inadequate, I would hope to see that in your report, so that we could in fact act on.
Yeah, we have, we have a couple of people that are out because they're out on medical leave, if you want to put it that way. We have positions that are open because we've had a ongoing conversation with civil service on how they wanted to fill up the positions that there were no tests given for. And we went through a whole iteration in the last five weeks probably to canvas all the people that were on the list to take a test, which doesn't necessarily mean those are people that are qualified, that they, that have the position. And we canvassed all the people on the list, I think there was twenty-four or five or six people that we canvassed, that now we came back with no one that wants the job without even taking the test. So now we're working with civil service on what our next step is going to be, so we're in compliance with what they're asking us to do.
And this is it, I'm sitting with both my colleagues, they're both right on either side of the, the equation. I guess what I'm saying is that if you find it in grounds and maintenance that where the current staff's being overworked and we do in fact need another position, we can make movements to do that. But I believe that the statute wants to see it rectified through the budget, but first presented as an issue by the director himself. And that would trickle itself down as well to the.
In O and M, we do a lot of creative staffing to get things done.
Right, and if that's become, if that's become the regular basis, it shouldn't be. And that's something we need to look at and prepare a budget in the direction of. Thank you.
Any other questions for the directors? Thank you. Okay. Now we come to the consent, consent agenda part of our, uh, agenda. And we're looking at items A one through C eleven.
D, D four.
D, D four, okay, my mistake. Two, I have a motion please. Neil and Heather. Is there, um, do we have any comments, or are we looking for anything to call?
Victoria, on the budget transfer, uh, fifty thousand five hundred for the actual site, what is?
That was, that's actually the irreductible contract. There was confusion about who was supposed to create that PO. And so we discovered that we had neglected to actually open the PO when we approved that contract, so we had to transfer within the project to have it in the right code.
That's not the actual amount of their contract, that's just what you needed to change.
No, no, that's just what we needed to move around.
Anybody else? All right.
Um, all favor.
Hi, hi. Everybody opposed. Seven, nothing, so okay.
Okay, so Mr. President, I'd like to recognize, um, we have one of our new hires here. We do have a bus driver on the. We do have a bus driver on the agenda this evening. Charles Rajtrum is with us, so we wanna thank him for.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming to the meeting.
Absolutely, but thank you so much. And then also in item ten, although we will do a much more formal presentation, we have Mr. Zimmer who will obtain tenure on December fourth, 2021. And we'll have a full presentation for him in the tenure recognition at the end of the year. But we want to, we are very thankful that Bill is with us, and he does an incredible job. He's, the high school runs like clockwork under his toolage, so we thank him very much for all that he has given to the district, and we're so proud that he is one of our tenured administrators.
Thank you.
And that's all I can do.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmer. Student representative, Maggie?
Um, so starting off with the elementary school, the school kicked off the month of November with events and opportunities for learning about Native American Heritage Month. Students were educated about tribes, and the staff raised a general awareness about the unique challenges Native American people have faced both historically and in the present, and the ways in which tribal citizens have worked to combat these challenges. Resources to look over these topics were also shared for families to look over. As many of you know, Veterans Day is on this Thursday, November eleventh. The elementary school, the elementary school has taught a much deserved tribute to military veterans who have served in the U.S. Armed Forces also. At the middle school, some eighth grade students have officially received their lockers, and everyone has access to theirs at this moment. The PE teachers began a new program called the Turkey Challenge, which encourages students to exercise at home or anytime outside of the school day. Each exercise that is completed enters the student into a raffle for a fun prize to be drawn in December. The middle school GSA is hosting an art competition for World Kindness Day, which is November twelfth. Students are working on pieces of art that celebrate kindness and unity, which will be displayed through the halls once they're submitted. At the high school, Misa was just here, but she won't hear this sadly. Her class called America Through Many Eyes held a presentation during eighth period today that represented the hardships that Native Americans faced through their lives in America. Some presentations included the structures that natives lived in, and others mentioned their struggles, including high rates of sexual assault and suicide. These presentations were available for high school students to attend, and were very educational and informative. This Sunday, November ninth, the Future Medical Professionals Club will be volunteering at Highland's vaccination site right here at the high school. This will be a great opportunity for not only more people to get vaccinated, but also a great opportunity for those in the club to gain more medical experience. And finally, for your book club, we have to take Board of Ed photos at the next meeting. Ms. Ramirez, who is our advisor, told me that we cannot post them this any longer because she moved in. So everybody look pretty for the next meeting, that's all. Uh, any questions?
The vaccination clinic, that's this weekend?
Yes.
So we also have another one.
Yes.
So this weekend is at the high school.
Yes.
Next weekend is at the elementary school.
Next Wednesday, I was, that's in my update.
Okay. Good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
So as part of our Super Tens Conference Day last week, we had child protective services here. We had individuals from different programs from there. And the idea was that we were going to just improve our communication and talk a little bit more about how we can support our families and how we can better just problem solve some of the situations that we unfortunately come across throughout the year. So they sent four individuals that all work in different areas. CPS has taken some different approaches to try and be a little more proactive and preventative in some natures, and find ways to partner with families rather than simply investigating certain situations. So we talked through some scenarios with them, got to meet some of their staff face to face that we work with, you know, on the phone or by email to improve on that. And they gave us some updates to some changes to their programs. So it was a good time for our, our mental health staff and some of our counseling staff, who typically predominantly make a lot of the calls to CPS, to talk through some of that. And it was a time for us to share some of our concerns when we have some of these cases and talk through some of the logistics. There are a lot of confidentiality issues when we get to that point. And then as a school district, sometimes we can feel a little bit in the, in the dark and frustrated sometimes, we don't get some information back. So we talked about ways that they can work with families to try to get us a little more in the conversation at times. So it was a productive conversation. I provided them with all of our staff directories, so they have every way to contact every one of our employees, so they know direct ways to get in touch with us should they have to. The, I'm speaking with the vaccination clinic for next week. I've already got my first email from my homeschool parent who's looking to come back once their child is vaccinated. So we do anticipate that number to increase for students that, and families that are willing to return to in-person schooling once that happens. So we're excited that they extended that to the five to eleven. And I know that we already have some parents signed up for our clinic at the elementary school, and some of them are attending other ones, going to Best Buy, and even at their own pediatric offices and different pharmacies. So we are excited to, I'm excited to see our homeschool number go down in that sense that we're getting back some of these students who want to return, the families want them to return, but are doing so at a level where they feel comfortable. So we're excited about that.
That's true.
This was a program that Tom Von Jovi was working on before the COVID nightmare. It was the ARCH program. And I, I don't know if I talked to you about that, Joel, or, or you, can you give me a status of where that might be, or is it something that's still being talked about?
So we had implemented it basically for that year. And then last year, we didn't utilize it because, you know, it wasn't necessary. So it's a program that if there's not students that are in that scenario, you know, it's not wrong. Not productive to run it.
Right.
So we're, it's there, should we determine that we do need to get it up and running again, you know, it'd be pretty easy to get going. But right now, we just don't have the numbers that support that.
That's, that's good news.
Yes, yes, that's good news. Yeah, so I mean, the numbers are really low. We do look at just the traditional sense of, you know, the tutoring hours that we provide with our in-district staff and then our outside tutors as well. So yes, I mean, since we hope that that continues, that we don't need it. But once we, if we do get to that point, we would start it back up again.
Thank you.
And is staff been appointed back for this year? I know we did last, last year, that's the case.
I don't think we've appointed anyone this year.
No, we have, we have not appointed anyone. So yeah, we would look at that once, if we do, we would put it out there for teachers. We didn't have any issues getting teachers to do it. And the way it worked at the high school was, I think, a little bit easier to get people to do it because we did it by subject. So, you know, if Monday was math or whatever it was, staff weren't committing to every day after school. Every other, committing to one day after school.
Any other question? Sure.
Okay, well, first of all, I'm sure Joel's probably gonna talk about this too, but.
Here we go.
I am, but, you know, you can't say thank you enough. So I would like to thank everyone who either worked on or attended the Highland Educational Foundation Hall of Fame Dinner last Wednesday night. It was a beautiful evening. We had, I think, around a hundred and thirty people there to honor our three, our three inductees. Scott McFarlane, as Mr. Zimmer mentioned, Hoby Simpson, and our retiree, Darlene Pachek. So it was a wonderful evening, lots of work went into it. Thank you to many local organizations that contributed in some fashion or another, Vatseed Cider, Minerd Farms, Bella's, Biscotti, my, there's a lot. But so it was a really, it was a lovely evening and really went off very well. Then I did send last week the agenda from our first Super Tens Conference Day of the, in the school year. I, I do want to highlight one thing that wasn't on the agenda. The four sessions that most, that all teaching staff and some of our support staff attended in the morning, that was all in-house presentations that were done. So the culturally responsive sustaining education presentation was done by Harriet Meyer, English teacher at the high school, Krista Petrosop, another English teacher at the high school, Leah Harris, who is a middle school science teacher, and Jill Berger, who's an elementary school teacher. And they really talked about the framework that was created by our curriculum committee on, subcommittee on DIRECT, our equity committee. They did a lot of work in the spring, and then in the summer, looking at all different rubrics to, to look at culturally responsive practices, created our own Highland one. And then they presented that to staff to tell them about the process and introduce the ideas behind it to the whole staff as we move forward in the year, but we'll be doing more dedicated work in grade levels and departmental management. So that was very well received. The LGTQ plus identity terminology and NASA, that was presented by Dr. Pat, as well as Ms. Bucker, who is school psychologist at the elementary school. They gave really a review, again, it says on the thing, of LGBTQ identity terminology, so that the whole K-12 staff is aware of kind of where that, where that world is for our students and, and working on creating, you know, an accepting environment for all of our students. The STAR training was done by Karen Brooks, and that was to give teachers an introduction to a lot of the reports that can be run through STAR and some of the professional developer, or the lesson plans that are available to address particular standards. And then the last one, Speaker of the School, that was a presentation that I did. And again, one of the things I have heard in talking to grade levels or teachers really throughout last year into this year is that they want to do the right thing when they, they witness a moment of bias, which can be lots of different things. But they're afraid that they're going to either escalate the situation, or they don't know exactly what to say. And so that presentation gave them some vocabulary and language for, you know, what to say, when to step in, to keep it very unemotional, to, you know, that this is something that you can do without it becoming an argument really. So the four, they were very well received. We sent out a survey the end of last week. One of our questions was how helpful did you feel this was to your practice? Which is always the thing with professional development, right? Not, you know, feel like it was, it was worth their time. And about seventy percent of our staff said that it was either a five, which is very, very, very helpful. You know, it was a scale of one to five. No one put a one, very few people put a two, and the rest were three, fours, and fives. So it was very well received. We got a lot of feedback. Another one of the questions was, you know, where, what PD would you like to see moving forward? So some of that built on the beginnings that we saw in these sessions. And then there was, as we were talking earlier, kind of the theme of the evening, you know, the social emotional health of our students and our adults. And so our next half-day professional development day is December sixth. So we're really looking at focusing on that SEL work on December sixth. So overall, it was very well received. The afternoon, teachers, all three buildings had time to look at their curriculums and their kind of scope and sequence and adjust to the needs of our students. And really, you know, we're to, almost, we're full marking period in, you know, where do we need to adjust? What kinds of things do we need to do to address the gaps that we're seeing in student learning? So overall, it was a very successful day. Very proud of the people who presented. They, they really, you know, it was nice to use the expertise in our district to, to help others learn. So that was great. And then just a side comment, we actually had a FOIL request for the number of people who did not provide proof of vaccination in, in our vaccination process. And so I hadn't really looked at the numbers since more in the beginning. I've, I've added people. So overall, our rate of vaccination in the district as a whole, with all faculty and staff, is about eighty-seven percent. So that, I think, we should be proud of that. I, I think that that's a very high number. I think it says a lot about our district and, and wanting to do well for kids. So I just wanted to highlight that.
So do you think Dr. Buck would be willing to, could he give us the presentation that we talked about for LGBTQ?
Absolutely, I think we can talk about that and see, you know, how we would want to do it. Because it, we, we wanna think about it because it was a forty-five minute presentation, so.
Okay.
We, you know, we might look at how we could modify it a little bit, or we might be able to do it in kind of a retreat kind of setting here. But absolutely.
And the nice part about that session is that we actually had a former student come on and spend time that morning and helped give that presentation. So, so that was nice. He Skyped in for, or Zoomed in from Sienna and Skyped in for that. So that was, that was wonderful.
Sure, I just wanna thank you for the board for your participation in the Highland Hall of Fame event. Believe me, for those who were there, it was, it was unbelievable. It was great. It was, it was actually a great event for the Highlands community to have at this moment in time. Brought a lot of people together. The speeches given by two of the inductees, Ms. Pachek and Mr. McFarlane, were lively and emotional. The testimonials given on behalf of Hoby Simpson, late Hoby Simpson, by his wife and his daughter were unbelievable and really powerful. But again, throughout that, that whole party, during the speech time and other conversations that were going on, there's a lot of head nodding, a lot of smiling. And looking around the room, unfortunately, or, you know, or however, there was a lot of tears too, looking at some individuals in the audience. But that's what, that's what.
Lots of pride.
Heather, also, thank you very much for your part in that committee. Made it a success, and believe me, that place could not fit another individual.
Naturally, yeah.
And it's, it's an impressive location, but, you know, we filled it up. Look forward to next year. And thanks again for your participation on that, and maybe the next one.
I agree, it was a great night, it really was. You know, it's funny, thinking back on the night, I really thought after the presentation for Hoby Simpson, poor Scott McFarlane to get up there to have to follow that presentation, but he knocked it out of the park. He really did, he latched it up well, he pulled it all together. I, I have to say, the order of those presentations could not have been better.
Right, it was good, it really was.
And I'm excited that he was able to speak at the school too, because I know as a former student, obviously you feel a pride of how, unfortunately, he was able to do the same thing to our students.
Saw a lot of people out at that event that I haven't seen in a long time also. So again, it took, it was a great event, it brought people out of their homes and back into the community atmosphere that so many people from this community have known about, and we're looking forward to what's happening, happening again. So again, it's great job, man, thank you.
So on that note, I will jump in if you don't mind, and just. There's definitely, I have some things here, but I, I've just done the Hall of Fame. Thanks, thanks again to everyone for being there. But please mark your calendars for February twenty-sixth. That will be the next installment of inductees into the Hall of Fame, and that will be, everything going in our direction looks like a snowball will take place this year. So that will be February twenty-sixth, it's a Saturday. And the foundation is already making plans for that event, so we look forward to having them in there. I'd like to thank the board for spending the evening with us last Tuesday night, touring the elementary and the middle school, and then again this evening. It's not easy to add extra meetings in, and we know that your time is valuable, but we do appreciate that you took the time to come around and see some of the things that we identified as high priorities for us in the district. So thank you for. So thank you for that. Thanks to everyone who participated in the, the conference day, but especially to my two right arms over here, Sarah and Patrick, did a phenomenal job getting all of those presentations together. I actually sat through, I shouldn't say sat through, makes it sound like I was forced to, but I went to all of the presentations, just as a teacher would. And I can say that they were some of the best presentations that I've seen happen here in quite a while. So lots of effort went into making those great. It was phenomenal to see that high school student back, you know, sharing experiences and helping Dr. Paff with the presentations, so. And then just in the last few weeks, Patrick doing all the work to get the rescue fund applications in place, so that's wonderful. And then vaccine clinics. So we, we've known about the vax-to-school program. We will be running the vax-to-school program on Sunday, the 14th, here at the high school. And I think that's what Maggie and her friends will be at. We got word yesterday that we now can run a pediatric vax-to-school site. We were trying desperately to get that done by this Thursday and have it Thursday evening. That did not work out. So we will be having it next Wednesday, the 17th, with a second dose on December 8th. We have 120 pediatric doses that were put up for availability at 3:30 this afternoon. At last check, at about 5:30, from the 120, we were down to 75 slots left. So they were going pretty quickly. Also, we were able to secure 120 doses for 12 and up. Those could either be first doses or boosters if you're eligible. And at 5:30, we were down to 99 slots. So they're going pretty quickly. I tried logging onto my phone before to see if we had an update. The message went out to the parents via robo-call, robo-email. We had them sent to either our website where there was a flash or to our Facebook page so that they could log on and register. Those appointments are registered, you have to register in advance. You can't just, it's not a walk-in clinic. So, so that'll be next Wednesday. And I've already reached out to Maggie and her friends to see if they are available. So if they are available to come and help volunteer at that site, we would love to have them. I will thank them again tomorrow, but Dr. Paff and, and Mrs. Saylor and, you know, our, our high school student, Victoria Oliveri, did such a wonderful job tonight presenting. Reminder that middle school and elementary school parent conferences are upcoming on the evenings of the 22nd, 23rd. And all schools have AM conferences on Wednesday, the 24th, just before Thanksgiving. And just wish everyone a restful and happy Thanksgiving. And our next scheduled board meeting is December 7th, unless we choose to add an additional one, which I would be all for if you're wanting to do so. But we can get to that when we get later into the, into the evening, so. Thank you.
Good.
Okay, thank you, Sarah.
Board of Education, any new business staff we would like to discuss?
Actually, yeah, I saw in the local paper, I think the Southern Ulster Times, that Walk Hill is talking about live streaming their meetings. And I was just wondering if that is something that we might want to think about. Apparently, some parents came, voiced concern that they would like to see live-stream meetings. I'm hitting you cold, yes.
Just, just look into it.
Yeah, definitely, kind of a conversation.
We, we do have it, well, it's live-streamed, but it's not aired live. It goes on to the website one or two days later.
Yeah, I think this is where the parents can actually tune in and maybe even participate in the meeting. I think that's what Walk Hill was intending.
We can just, we can do it through Zoom or any other platform like that. I mean, that's.
I, I, I just, you know, it's just always so nice to have participation from the community live.
I can reach out to Superintendent Paff to find out what exactly they, they are doing.
Okay, alright.
See if we, and then I can, I'll send, I'll put it in my Friday report when I find out, okay?
Great.
The reason why we were recording it, but showing it at a later date, a later time other than real time, was for what reason? Was it a technology issue or was there some other?
I'll have to get back to you on that, actually, I can't say for sure.
Yeah.
I know that there wasn't a problem, but I'm not too sure what.
Right, there was no problem. There, I don't know if it was ever decided.
Right. It's something that's not, you know, you're not required as a board to live-stream it. And I think it was just a discussion.
But I'll be virtual for so, it probably was just a level of people's, like, thought process. But I, the will, the will of the board, if, if we want to live-stream, that's.
We'd just like to think that if we did live-stream, that we would get more parent participation where they could tune in rather than actually have to physically come here. And it's just, uh.
That would have to be a Zoom-type of platform because we could do it like we, we did live-stream probably seven, six, seven years ago when we were in the COVID period. But you're, you're talking about participation from.
Right, right.
In addition, a lot, yeah. That would have to be a Zoom, right, that way. There are other platforms to live-stream, yes, but if you want to have participation, then someone has to monitor it here and that kind of thing.
Seven, eight years ago, that was very glitchy. I remember people texting in saying, "We can't hear what's going on," or it froze.
Well, see, that, that's another technology.
So that was one of those, at the very beginning of that type of.
And that was a long time ago though, I mean, things have changed.
That's advanced greatly now.
Absolutely.
Right, 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 it has, right.
What I would say is if we, if we do offer it, we want to make sure we're strategic. Because I know like at work, we try to do meetings where they're hybrid and every person has to have a computer in front of them if you're on Zoom because otherwise the audio is hard and then you get echoes and you gotta figure out who has their.
No, yeah.
Aside from the tech barrier, if you're talking about participation and you're gonna allow a, a exchange, you could have 75 people on there and they all might want to exchange. In other words, it really doesn't have to be a community need. It'll be interesting to see, you know, why the, why the need has come to Walk Hill and what they're gonna do with that. Because if the board's meeting can easily get away from. But I, I like the expanding of the school.
Oh, yeah.
But if, if you don't require the community come here, why should I come here? I want to sit on the microphone. I'm not sure how many, that, that human, the life change in that state. I've done several, and if we don't speak up, you can't, you can't really.
But that, that technology, because.
There might be an investment, like, a lot of board meetings, there's a microphone in front of the board, or, you know, there might be.
This system right here, sorry, will do it. This microphone right here picks every Zoom-up, people in the whole room. So if we have that ability right here in this room, which is much better microphone than that camera.
But you don't have a line running from that to that.
Correct. That's just for the, for that camera up there, for the Zoom, and that will pick up everybody's voice. I mean, it's definitely, it's definitely doable.
I gotta tell you, we've been consistently packing this room right to the brim. Might have to start thinking about a different, I know it empties out after a while, but it's, it's just that initial squeeze into the room with all these people, you know.
Well, that brings up another thing that it's just, I, I know I had mentioned wireless microphones for like once we do get into bigger venues. Have we looked at that yet?
So, so I've looked at a lot of things, and it depends actually on the room, right? Because every microphone is picking up the next microphone.
Uh-huh.
So there are wireless systems, depending on where you go. The auditorium system does work, but there's wireless systems you can buy for that, for sure.
Yeah, it's just.
But for here, it might be difficult because it's close. So just like one great one up there or at a camera, it really does pick everybody up.
Well, something to, something to think about.
Right, for a larger venue, you mean, like the auditorium?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, my board meetings at BOSI's are just, they're phenomenal because we have these tiny little wireless mics right in front of us. And it's just, everything is so crystal clear. And, and the room is huge. It's.
But that, that hooks into the sound system of that space, correct?
It, it does, yes.
Yeah, that's why we need to do the auditorium, because we don't have a sound system in here. So the wireless mics don't, they don't have anything to hook into here.
But, but you could, I mean, it's just that it would bounce around in here so much. The feedback could be great in a small room. You know, what we do is look at cameras like that or other things for this area, and that is sufficient to pick up all the voices. And there are better ones than what we have, for sure, that I'm looking at for like the library. But, but to put an individual mic in front of everybody here may not work the way that.
Oh, here?
Right, right.
No, not needed.
Right, yeah, right.
Just a quick input from a student. I know that when we were hybrid in class, it was always difficult when we had people at home. If we have like 100 parents on Zoom, which probably wouldn't happen anyway, but if it did, then they would all be on there and let's say they all have questions. Do we like stop and answer them? Do we have to answer every single one? Like, how do we go about that? And then is the meeting going to take like 10 times longer? Or, like, a lot of people would go on Zoom meeting, but they might not come in person. So it's good that they would get to see it, but there are like options like a webinar, I think, maybe. I don't want to say don't let them interact with us, but it would just take a really long time, I think. And they might, that open, that might open a new can of worms. Like, they might say they're not paying attention to us, they don't hear our input if we like. Like, they're already allowed to come. So I feel like they have an option. But I just.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other new business as a board? Old business, capital project update?
So I do not have, I, we really thought that we would have numbers. I let you know that yesterday, that we do not have numbers on all of those As and Bs. Were hoping to have those by the end of this week, beginning of next week, so that some just like targeted discussions can, can happen. There were more items on that list to be costed out than we thought could be. We thought they could all be done in that short amount of time, but, so the, the architect does need some more time on that. So.
We need, I mean, if we have to make a decision in December, which is December, January timeframe.
No, I understand that, but we also want him to be accurate. And so, you know, that's, that's the, the difficulty that we're up against is that we are trying to squeeze a lot in in a very short amount of time. So not to make excuses, but, you know, I don't know those numbers and I just want to make sure that they're accurate because I don't want something being put out there that's inaccurate, that stalls our process down the line because it looks like we were not being upfront and transparent about what those numbers are, so.
Soon as the architect forward the numbers this year.
You'll get them as soon as I have them.
Have you received an update from them in terms of the time?
Peter had a call in today. I don't believe that call came back before we started our meeting then. If you got anything before we started today.
Is it safe to expect we'll have numbers, your numbers five or something like?
I sure hope so. I wouldn't see why not, when we thought we were gonna get them in the 10 days. I can't imagine another.
Does that speak to the architect?
Thirty more days. That's a big undertaking to be accurate on these numbers. We asked for some very large items to be costed out and.
Well, they're not unfamiliar with the district, right? I mean, this is, we're coming off a capital project that affected all three buildings. CS Arch is familiar with all these things. Current construction costs, material busts, neighborhood problems, shit, and we're out of it. I think we really should consider that second meeting in December, even though they might only be a week apart. Especially if we get some, some good data from them and some good numbers as far as potential items for the project.
I'm gonna do an update tomorrow with the architect. I anticipate that there's a possibility, a good possibility, that maybe a lot of part of next week we can have support services here. But I won't know that until I have the conversation with him tomorrow.
Depending on how that, that goes, maybe even before December 7th. I'm not trying to crowd us and take up all our time, but I don't want to go much past the second week of December with a second meeting, holidays coming up. End of school for the year. We do the best to get there as board members, you know.
So I think one of the conversations that probably could be had this evening is how do we manage the BOSI's project, our project? What is the board's feeling on how we want to move forward with that? Are we looking to merge the, the, the bonding? Is, do we want to view them as two separate things? We know that the original amount that we, that Bernie Donigan's office laid out for us was about 16.6, I believe.
Yep, 16.675.
And then with the presentation last week, or last meeting when BOSI's was here, I think it was 3.3 is what our contribution would be to the BOSI's. But 3.3 doesn't just come off the 16.6 because of interest and things of that nature. So I think, Victoria, you had somewhere in the, in the high elevens?
Yep, it ended up in the 11, 12 range, which is a, a lot to take off of our potential project.
Right, so I think that's a conversation.
Of course, of course.
So, so I had asked after Bernie Donigan presented to the board, I had done some rough numbers about what I thought the impact would be, but they gave me an estimate of the BOSI's project would be just under $14 per $100,000 of assessed value for a 20-year financing for the BOSI's project. So if that were held separate, if we went forward with the 16.6 for the district project, keeping the tax neutral for the in-district project, and then just allow the BOSI's to increase the levy, which is allowable under the tax cap calculation, that is their estimate of what the impact would be to the taxpayers. Here, if you put the impact up? Exactly, it was 13.91 dollars per 100,000. So if you have a $200,000 house, it's gonna be, you know, about $28. And that's an annual figure? From, yep, financing from 2023 to 2042. So, you know, that, that isn't an insignificant impact, but weighing that versus losing $5 million worth of work for the district.
It's not really an option.
Right.
Depending on where the numbers come from. Thank you.
Of course.
A lot of things to talk about. Is there any, last minute updates on our current existing projects or that, whatever status with that?
Well, we know that the canopy is still not finalized. And we are in the process of dealing with that piece with legal counsel. But I can leave the other.
Punch lists there?
We talked about, we talked today about the things that we're able to, not close out, right?
Right, we can't close it out fully until we have that resolved.
Right.
That's holding it up at this point, sorry.
It is.
To the detriment of why, is there any negatives coming out of that, like being held up?
Right now, it's not, as we move forward. I think in December, Bernie Donigan is gonna get a better sense from us of whether we think we'll be able to close it out. And if not, they will appeal to stay dead on our behalf to, to have the aid start. And it's kind of a, it's not an atypical situation. It's not something highly unusual for stay dead to see.
Right. Look, aside from that canopy, which was really a small piece of the project, is, are all other punch lists and everything, that we've got all our substantial completion punch lists is all set, or there's still some outstanding items?
There's a couple of small items that are outstanding with Darlin that we're working on. We had some conversations with the roof around the library. We had some conversations with the roof around the library and how they were gonna handle that. Uh, we got High Grade here who's seen roof contract that they used when they did the work there. That is actually coming, uh, we didn't know if they're gonna be able to come prior to winter or after winter to resolve those issues, but they're apparently, uh, right now they're scheduled to come Thursday and deal with the, some of the roofwork around the, um, library in association with some of the stuff that we did in-house with rerouting, uh, grain pipes and things up on the roof. And they'll work on the roof there. And they're also going to replace a, uh, which is separate from that. They're replacing a skylight and doing some roofwork on the elementary school and the middle school roofs on Thursday too. So we tied that all together. But Darland is pretty close to being, uh, finalized.
And I think we just need, we have a few outstanding invoices for like the video of you all that we haven't.
Yes, the li, the library, the library work is not, it's probably ninety-nine percent up for, yeah.
Um, Joel, uh, CS Arch is right now, uh, pricing out just the As?
As and Bs.
As and Bs.
Bs. Are they doing anything with turf field, maintenance facility?
Yes.
We asked them to give us an estimate on all of that.
We did, we did, and there's some, there's some big whiffs there, because we talked about air conditioning too. Um, so air conditioning, the maintenance facility, the turf field were all things that were on the periphery of the As and Bs that we wanted to have some sort of a number to attach to it.
Thank you. We're talking about air conditioning in, in every space or just common areas?
Yeah, I think we, we left it open to, to give it so that it was in, um, it was in chunks, so that we had an idea of what it would take in different parts. And then if, so if we did it in small sections, and we, or, or large spaces, so to speak. So that would be like a small part of a building, but it's a large space as far as kids. Um, what is that in comparison to if you do a whole hallway or? So, so maybe our, maybe our ask was too much.
Right, I'm gonna say, I mean, those numbers are gonna come back and they're gonna, they're gonna shock us.
I'm sure. But, so to be, to be truly transparent, we wanted to make sure all the information was there.
I appreciate that. In order to move the process along, I mean, shouldn't we have discussion at the board level of, are we looking for a location of the maintenance facility here? Are we going up top? Because that's gonna change those prices dramatically. I mean, I think you just, we're gonna start waiting for these numbers in our next meeting with December seven. And then we have to decide on, we wanna do some.
Well, Pete, you gave them a location.
Do we wanna do some outdoor learning pavilions? Do we wanna try to be a little bit more proactive in, in expanding, you know, where we're going than just waiting for, waiting?
No, there's been, there's been.
I don't know what the rest of the board's feeling is for.
Well, they said they could, most likely the numbers would be revealed next week, I heard.
But they, they.
We're not needing.
I'll take the numbers first, because we can take the long days of that data.
We had a preliminary conversation about the location of the maintenance building. And their, the site engineer is going to review that and look at that as far as whether that's feasible or not.
Right.
And I think that's something that comes up quick to be, make a decision of moving forward or not moving forward, because we don't have, we don't own land to put it on, if that's the case. But that's the decision that comes to this table to decide where we are once we have that data. Because if, if we are working on a facility that has a tremendous amount of site work, that's gonna impact the whole thing. So, there's a lot to that, that we've been pushing them for, to try to get all that put together, so we're not just throwing a number out there. We wanna have something that's gonna add up properly.
Well, we can totally, we can totally modify that request. I mean, I, but I, I think what we heard was we wanted the As and Bs in the large projects so that we could have a, uh, a conversation based in, uh, as best information as we possibly could get at the time. And again, with, with the, the way things are, costs are and, and shipping and whatever, we don't, you know, we're trying to have them be as conservative as possible, so that we don't end up with something that's so outlandish that we can't make an informed decision.
Understood, but I, I'm still not sure if the entire board is on complaint with air conditioning or, or.
No, I don't think, and I don't think we thought that either, but we've.
Are we all agreement to a turf field? Are we all in agreement to this, that, and the other thing?
Well, I mean, I do think that's the difficult part that we are facing, is that we were trying to get answers for different members and not trying to, you know, just favor one, you know, idea over another. We want all the information on the table so that we can make informed decisions.
I think, I think obviously having all the information is best, so I appreciate the request. I think we should definitely, if we don't get any of the information within the next few days, check in with them to say, where are you? And maybe modify that request so that we can get some data.
Sure.
If they're not even nearly close to what we need.
Right. We can have that conversation.
Just to make sure we're getting something to start considering.
Maybe that was my fault that I was mishearing what it was, the, the conversation.
No, not at all, I think all the.
Well, I think it's spot on.
I heard three thing project.
I think there's just a concern about time.
Yeah.
And the time it takes to narrow something down to.
I think ultimately these terms are confusing, so we have that information.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, I didn't, I didn't think that if we knew, and I'm just throwing this out there, if we knew that air conditioning was five million dollars and we didn't know what the turf field was, it has no value until you have all the pieces put together to say, well, you're gonna select or not, well, you're not gonna select.
Understood, but if five, two hundred and fifty.
Further down that, you're gonna end up at some point in time deciding what.
Why are we going that route? Why spin our wheels trying to come up with numbers for air conditioning?
I don't disagree, so if you wanna have that conversation about what you wanna take off the table, that would really help us to try to scope out.
I don't.
That was a question that was asked.
I'm speaking for myself. I'm not totally in favor of air conditioning in the entire school district. I don't know how everybody else feels on the board, but for the month of June, which is predominantly testing, and if testing is in the auditorium, in the, it's gymnasium, maybe we air condition just the gymnasium, that's what we're concerned with. Because the month of June, let's say for elementary school, there's, there's field days, there's a lot going on. For the high school, testing starts in the first week or the second week. So May is not a month that you really need air conditioning. September, beginning of school, maybe for a couple of weeks. And then during October, school mornings and warm afternoons. That's May. I don't know where everybody else, I haven't heard a word from anybody else yet on their feeling with air conditioning in the entire school facility.
Oh, I, I.
The twelve-month individuals, of course, they have air conditioning in, in central office, in all the administrative offices. They are already air conditioned. Our auditorium is air conditioned. Correct if I'm wrong, it's November, is this air conditioner on or is that just pushing air?
That's probably running in the heat pump room right now.
I mean, I would, I would like to have the data to make a difference. So I think, once we see the numbers from me, I like to make that.
I think that's the thing, for some people, I know if they're gonna be in, it's because the number's reasonable versus not. And not adding that is really.
Oh, I was, I was in for the large, the large room, large area scenario, the, the bigger commentary.
Yeah, the bigger commentary.
Area, to get numbers on that, I was not in favor of.
But is it gonna be broken down that way?
I think it's gonna be broken down that way, because some of the questions were, was like, because of whether it was going to be easy or not to like retrofit, retrofit the unit vents that we put in already. Um, and what that kind of cost would be versus air conditioning in this building versus the elementary building.
Is there a large space that has air conditioning now?
Other than the auditorium?
The auditorium does, right?
The library.
I tell you, that system labors. I'm not a big fan of that system. Having been in the auditorium, while there was supposed to be AC running, I find that it labors. I'm, I'm concerned that all these smaller disconnected systems, you really pay attention to them when you use them and when you're not, they kind of move, and they're just not tuned in or running as a full building system that gets monitored.
And I think there's a, there's a misnomer in, in calling it just air conditioning. I think climate control is what we're looking at.
And it's true. But, but climate control has already been incorporated in two of our buildings.
Right, and that's why.
Per New York State regs.
Where can we adjust? And I, I think you made a valid point that it is a different meeting where, although to me, I think it's a very important thing, and I think it's increasingly important as we move forward in the future. But I think at that meeting, you said that it's going to be, if it does become that critical issue, there are potential state federal funding.
Well, they're gonna go twelve months a year and do trimesters, whatever they're gonna do. I thought I was hearing at one point in time, we wanted this project to kind of rule us into the new technology piece, twenty-first century, you know, full bore, like some other districts are going. I haven't heard anything instructional really in our walkthrough. We didn't really visit a lot of instructional spaces.
We're talking about. In our initial conversation, that was what we were talking about. Was trying to create something, since this would be most likely the last bottom we could pull through sometime. You know, thrusting us, something that would make Highland need more, six times or four times, rather than playing catch-up.
But does that come from the board or does that come from school leaders saying, this is the kind of program we wanna put forward?
Well, I think when we, when we went to the elementary school and we looked at changing out those dividers, the, the temporary walls between buildings, that was part of the conversation.
That impacts the space.
Right.
Twenty-first century structure space.
And I don't know if that costs, I don't know if it's twenty grand or two hundred thousand.
And that's part of what we're going to be seeing.
We know there's some asbestos abatement in there along with all that, but.
Right, and that's, that's part of what we're getting.
I think we're talking about a lot of information we don't have. I think the one decision we can make tonight is what are we looking for in terms of magnitude progress? Are we looking to bring the target down to how many, to the bulk of the targets? Or are we looking as a board to stand at our consistent sixteen point six and have that BOCES separate? I think that's something we can discuss tonight, and we have the information that we need for that.
Thanks, Maggie.
So I can start that one off if you guys want. Because I really think, honestly, I, I appreciate, um, the thought and time that BOCES has put into the project that they've put together, the timing, the things that they've considered in terms of, you know, what counts as our cap, what doesn't. Um, and I know that many of our students go do to, go to those facilities and use our facilities. That's certainly something that's needed. But at the same time, I don't think that that should impact our facilities at Highland. I really still think that we need, um, you know, this is like Ed just said, this is gonna be our last capital project that we can do for really zero impact, um, to the taxpayer for a while. Um, obviously, we can always do another one, but it's going to be of impact for our taxpayers. Um, so me personally, I would say I would wanna hold up that sixteen million, that would be my preference.
Which, which means you're not supportive of the BOCES? Or you're supportive of that for the long-term payment?
No, it doesn't. Correct, yep.
I'm of that camp. And what would that impact again, Victoria?
Thirteen point nine one dollars per hundred thousand dollars at assessed value annually.
Per hundred?
Per hundred thousand, yeah.
Hundred thousand.
So for, you know, I think more houses are likely to be between a hundred and two hundred thousand dollars.
That has no effect on the tax gap, right?
So like a destiny?
It is allowed in the tax cap.
So we won't be affected in the tax gap, so people still get their.
Correct.
I'm, I'm in agreement with, with Mike and Heather's call. Not to take away from the Highland, uh, project, just to separate this out.
Well, we're not gonna know that full impact until we get into the budget cycle.
Of, of what the tax.
Full impact to taxpayers on what our budget increases.
What our budget increases will be, yes.
So it's kind of, I mean.
And we won't feel that.
Some of the true robust.
But we won't even feel that in this budget cycle.
No, right. So, just so I'm clear, if the component, if one component district votes no, then it has to go to the public.
Correct.
Correct, yep.
Have they set it's date if, if, if that happens?
It's sticking May.
It's the same as our budget vote.
Correct.
Which would be a big hurt on us.
My guess would be in different locations, though. I don't believe it would be tapped onto our, like, our voting.
Correct, correct.
Um, our.
It'd be probably a separate.
Well, it would have to be in each district, um, it's like.
Uh, it wasn't, it wasn't when it was in Dutchess.
You don't think, I don't think.
It was in, um, there were like six locations across Dutchess and we had to go to one of them.
Yeah, right, right.
I mean, Ulster could say it's in, in every one of the component districts. I don't know if, if he said that.
But that's only if they need a vote, correct?
Correct.
Then you only want the component schools to vote no, and then they have to go to the public, correct?
Correct.
Has it been any indication, I flipped her with some?
So already seems to be a little negative.
Oh, yeah?
Kingston did pass it, I think.
Yes, Kingston, yep.
Won't take much, not a show over the edge.
Um, I will, oh, I'm sorry.
Once it goes to May, that means we don't get to choose financing, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
They go out to the dorm authority.
Dormitory authority.
That's it.
May, Derek, too.
I, I will, um, I will give you my feeling on this, and it's probably no surprise. I am not in favor of raising the tax cap. Because I know that we're, we're going to have a tax increase in May. This BOCES project, if we do it the way you're saying, will be above and beyond. And I am very concerned that, uh, our district will be the highest tax rate in the county per thousand. And, uh, so I'm not in favor of it. As to what you were saying before, I think you had mentioned that I wanna see some educational improvements being made. And parents did give me feedback, and I have sent it to you. And I, I think it's, I think it's really important that we consider some of these ideas for, that the parents gave us. Because if nothing else, this is what the parents will see, this is what the students will see. And I, I think it's so valuable to have, you know, an important, well-rounded education. And some of these ideas are just really good.
So just to clarify, you're, you're thinking that you want to, and I want to put words in your mouth, but reduce our capital project to accommodate the.
Correct, just to keep, there'll be no taxing impact to the taxpayer.
For either.
That's how I want to keep it. But it's, I'm just one board member.
Well, with that being said, it really does necessitate the need to see the numbers.
That's it.
We're losing, we'll be losing three point three or four, four million right off the top. I think I sit in Camille's camp and Michael's and Heather's, in that if we maintain what we have for our projects and what we need to give our, our campuses our, so we maintain the full funding for our, our projects and our campuses, the direct, the direct effect, effect on the entire population of Highland. The BOCES are fully supportive, but I think in this fashion, uh, since it's not gonna pierce the tax cap, that I, I see that amount being reimbursed through what they're gonna get back by not piercing the tax cap, and they'll still get more on top of it. So I don't see it as being, I, as long as we don't pierce that tax cap, they're gonna get money back that'll cover these BOCES and then some. So I, as to me, I don't see.
I don't know whether I understand what you're saying.
Well, when we don't pierce the tax cap, the, the monetary, there's a monetary influence on each taxpayer, right?
Yeah, he doesn't believe that with both projects moving forward, that there'll be a need to override or get a sixty percent vote, like that it won't pier, it won't go above the tax cap.
Right, but my point is, is I wanna tell the taxpayers that there's not going to be any increase with this capital project.
And I can, I can understand that. I guess one thing I think of, and actually just hearing the numbers tonight, not something I thought about before, but we're saying this is our last really project that we've had the opportunity to do for quite a bit of time for, for no tax.
It's the largest chunk, right?
Right, so if we think about within that time, if we do have something we need to do, and it's even three, three and a half million, that impact, you know, we have a benefit right now because we won't have that impact. That benefit would be, or that impact would be tough, because if you think about it, if we did in that meantime, we need to do a ten million dollar project, what does that mean for a hundred thousand per person? So. That number's a lot more significant, I think, than I would have thought.
Is there reimbursed, is there a reimbursement rate? We know in a capital project that there's a large percentage reimbursement rate. How does it work with the BOCES payment? Does that hold similar as a.
How does it work with the BOSIs payment? Does that hold similar as a capital project? We get reimbursed or?
We do get, we get aid back, but it's at a different rate, which is why it's not a one-for-one replacement for our project.
And it's not at a higher rate? It's at a little, a little lower rate?
No.
Well, the lower rate.
Right, I remember that, but I wouldn't say.
How close, how close roughly?
We're now at what, seventy-two percent still there?
Yeah, we're at seventy-two.
Take a sixty.
Seventy-two to sixty possibly?
Yeah.
I think we're seventy-two and it was sixty.
Yes.
Well, it's twelve percent, I mean, that's a-
Big jump over time, it has a big one.
So the resolution that's on the agenda tonight is simply to give our, give our blessing to move forward. Though it's not determining how we're going to finance.
Correct.
Correct. No, this is just giving BOSIs either a yea or nay from this component district.
Right.
How to support it.
If they get yays from all of the component districts, their project moves forward and we have say. If one of the component districts votes no on this proposition, then their project could still move forward through a vote of everyone.
A county-wide referendum.
We just would, it would be through the dormitory authority and we have less option on how to finance.
And it's often at a higher rate.
Right.
Right, it'll be more expensive.
So as soon as I have numbers, I will, I will make sure that everybody has those and, and we will have those available for the next meeting. If you want to come together for a meeting before Thanksgiving, I, we can put that together as soon as we have those numbers. Obviously, we would need to post it to the public and hopefully everyone would be able to be partake in that.
In addition to our December seventh meeting?
If you want to do that before the December seventh, yes. If, uh-
No, I said in addition to December seventh meeting, either we have a-
Yeah, yeah, I'm not in the word. Yeah, well, I'm, I'm saying if you wanted to have conversations, so going into December seventh, we could make some solid decisions.
November thirtieth is also a Tuesday.
But, November thirtieth is a Tuesday, but I believe it's the, the direct meeting is that evening.
Yeah, November thirty.
They have a direct meeting.
But that's six-
Six to seven thirty.
Six to seven thirty, so I mean, we still could have-
I, I know we've mentioned this, that the board would like to bring the community involved in this.
Yeah.
So how is that going to fit into decision-making?
Well, I mean, we can, the, the support services wanted to get this information together so that we could have conversations moving forward if we wanted to put proposals out there to get, or, or even project ideas out there that we wanted the, the community to weigh in on. We could, you know, put out a survey, um, at any point. It doesn't have, we don't have to wait for numbers.
No, I, I know that, that was thrown out there during, of course, some meetings that we're going to involve the community.
Right.
Seems like, again, you kind of come back to the numbers on that though, like to put out, even to have, maybe prioritize something.
First thing the community wants to know is how much it costs.
Right, I mean, they prioritize the two most expensive things, but we still need to buy boilersers, you know, that I think you kind of got to get an idea of, you know, what you want.
Those boilers might come back at eleven thousand. And then everything else is movement. I mean, we know that we've got to heat our spaces and do all that, but, you know.
Right.
Do you have a connection to get those for eleven thousand?
That'd be great.
There's also a drop deadline to get this stuff to SED and approved and budget, like, we haven't heard from, no, we haven't heard that from CSR or Bernie Donigan. What's the timeframe that they require?
Well, we heard it from Bernie Donigan. It's on, it's on his time, on their timetable that they gave us. We have until like, I believe it's February.
Okay.
But we don't want to be there. Like, I've been pushing to try to get this done so that we could go into-
February is right around the corner.
However-
Absolutely.
There is nothing stopping us from doing some type of blue newsletter to the community or e-newsletter that says, we're entertaining some capital projects, these are some of the ideas. You're invited to attend the next two meetings to share your idea or passion or, or, or.
Or at least to hear the conversation.
I mean, I, you know.
Yeah, it's on our website.
I did a few Facebook posts, but, you know, that's me.
We did put, we put one out for the one that was just followed up on after the Facebook post and let people know that we were going to have those preliminary conversations. We had Holly come in and do a, a whole press release on that.
So maybe December seventh, you know, if, if there's still some time to put something together and December seventh-
We could certainly do that.
To be fair though, we put this on C, CSR's table about eight, nine days ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, and we're pushing. I don't even know if we are, have an agreement.
Well, luckily, we did not.
This is not traditionally how we approach capital projects. We kind of more or less developed what the board wanted to move forward with, you know, we wanted to
Right.
reconfigure our front, our bus loop and all that. And then it went out to the design team to digest it a little bit, back with numbers. Peter's right. I mean, we're, we're-
Sounds like you were operating on a different time schedule.
We're asking the cram numbers.
We're on a high-speed trip, travel.
Not going to break it totally effort in this environment. But, you know.
And as I said, some of this conversation probably should have started last spring so that we could have gotten, you know, with it, starting this at the end of August, beginning of September, and trying to push this all into, you know.
I have all the confidence in the support services committee. They can get this done.
Last spring we were just worried about getting our students back.
I understand.
We were hoping you were going to-
So that's why we're on a fast track, unfortunately.
I get it.
And, and Heather, we did have some discussions in, early, so.
We did, early.
I think that we are just rest on Mike's confidence that we'll get it done.
So we wait for further information from CSR.
Do we still have a resolution? Are we going to say that or will we do that?
Yes, so you're going to do a number two.
So, Tom, we're going to wait until December seventh. We're not going to try to see if we can prove available or not. We're going to wait until December seventh.
Unless we want to have some other conversations before December, before we have, we might have some numbers that-
If I have numbers, I can get them, I will text you and let you know that they're all there and then we can have that conversation if you'd like to bring everyone together.
Again, you said November three is the fourth of July night?
The equity committee meeting is that night. Six to seven thirty, which is, you know, Camille and I will be in the ministry.
We can do that. Very important. We can do that either way with support services driving it to, well, you're going to have a board meeting too.
We can do that too. Um, but then, and then also on the twenty-second, twenty-third, or whatever the Tuesday is, I know you'd not like to have meetings on the nights of parent-teacher conferences. That is one of the parent conferences, that's the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. But.
Yeah, but I, yeah, sometimes.
It is tight, but I'm, you know.
I'm on a brining schedule at that point.
You're on brining schedule?
Mr. Fur.
Yeah.
I think that if we get the numbers and everything, and support services looks at it and says that this isn't complete enough to bring to the board, not wasting the board's time to get it.
Yeah, no, I don't want to waste anyone's time. I don't want to bring a meeting together if we don't have enough.
Right.
But.
Maybe what you need to do is just kind of save the date for every Tuesday between now and-
And we'll all go over to Mike B's house and we'll help brine while we have this conversation. But we'll bring a camera and we'll videotape it so that we can say it was a-
Keep the door open.
I don't know how to brine a turkey, so that would be very mad that night too.
You could, or, or even, you know, we could maybe even move it.
Yeah.
Five thirty, you know, it's just, it's hard to know. Yeah, I think Camille and Sue would think-
If I could assume you have the figures, why don't you just call a meeting? Just keep it simple.
I wouldn't move that, but you can, we have those dates. I would turn to the place.
Yeah, no way, no, that stays.
Yeah.
Hard to get that large group.
And then have a couple of us.
It doesn't have to be a Tuesday, right?
That's up to you guys. We can make any night.
This, this, we, we're going to have to be flexible and not, not necessarily work last minute, but, um, you know, let's, if we get the numbers and we feel comfortable making, as a support services group, make good recommendations to the, to the rest of the board. We know we can at least need and fine tune that package a little better. You guys, you guys up to that?
Sounds good.
I think the whole board is laying on all of the things.
So the, the BCS survey, so that list is not the building condition survey, that's an element of- Does the building condition survey have any cost estimates within it?
No, no, it's just items.
It just, okay, all right.
On recommendation of our, um, directed facilities and building administrators bringing forth issues that came out. Those are the ones that helped find through that list.
They determine, are critical, that are critical.
Okay, yeah. Oh, I feel like that CSR's was producing a building condition survey.
That was the initial-
We already had that, yeah, and it placed.
No, we-
Yes, that was the initial, uh, list that we gave you. Then we took that and incorporated the administrative stuff into that and that's when we organized it by the As and the Bs. The list that you have there is a combination, building condition survey and administrative. You'll notice there's a BCS next to anything.
I see, that's, yeah.
That's on the building condition survey.
Is the turf field inclusive of extending the bleachers for, for pricing in CSR's?
They are components, they're not latched together at this point.
But they are pricing that also?
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and like some of that was helped by the support services committee to help shape that list also.
I'm glad to hear there was a lot of participation. Everybody had input, that's good then.
Yeah.
All right, um, Ulster BOSI's capital project, be resolved at Board Education upon recommendation intended. Autorize the execution and delivery of an inter-municipal joint agreement with Ulster County Board of Walker Education Services and its component districts with respect to a proposed capital project and determining other matters in connection as presented to the board at this meeting. Have a motion, Sue and Mike. Uh, any discussion beyond what we already talked about? Home favorite?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody who votes? Seven, nothing?
I think we draw.
I think we do.
Great, thank you.
Everybody, or the other district? Exercise as the way you wrote it. Miscellaneous, any correspondence that any board members have received? No? Okay. Public comments?
Mariann?
Welcome back, Mariann. We missed you.
Yeah.
Everybody feels better. Everybody felt a little empty inside.
No public comments. Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn. Ru, Camille and Kevin. Former president, Vron, thank you.